We'll be a little distracted if we go in.
Questions?
Since I don't know that all the candidates are going to know all the members of the board selectmen, if you could introduce yourself to them and vice versa, so.
Brendan Mitchell.
Hi Brendan.
Gordon Andrews.
Tom Millius.
Troy Garett.
For all the members of the board selectmen, they're here to conduct interviews with the board candidates for the council and aging director position tonight. The board's just going to rotate through. And I think there might be a chance at the end for you to have any questions to the board. I don't know that the board's going to make a decision tonight. It's on the agenda as a possibility, but they're not obligated to make a decision tonight. That's up to them.
Okay. As always, the first question is, you want to tell something about yourself?
Well, yes, I've lived in Halifax for 20 years. Been a single mom, I've raised three daughters. Been invested in the town. I love this town. It means a lot to me and I was lucky enough to obtain a job here.
Why do you feel you're the person to be the council aging director?
Well, I've done a lot in the three years I've been at the senior center with the former director. I did a lot to make sure things ran smoothly, whether she wasn't in the office or I would initiate different projects. It's just, everything I've done in my career has led me to this job. I've worked with seniors for decades. It's just been the right fit all around.
Gordon.
Hello.
Hi.
So what experience do you have developing budgets and executing?
Well, I've done PR role, I've done some bills and things for Barbara when, you know, she wasn't there, not a lot. And I didn't have a lot of training, just help everything happen for her retirement. But in the last six weeks, I've just learned so much. And I'm not going to say it wasn't difficult and I wasn't anxious to really not have a lot of training and have to do all that, but as I've conquered each thing, it's just brought me more and more confidence. I've done a perfect job at this point. Budget, the budget status report wasn't easy, you know, and then when I went through the month, the full month that I was, you know, in charge of it and I had everything perfect. So the paying the bills and all of that, formula grants, you know, I have three on my desk right now. Two for grants, that's, it's a challenge, but I've been doing well.
You, hi. You may or may not have heard some of these questions before in some, some form of the same question, but I'd like to know, if you would, how would you go about starting in this job as the director? Not just the acting director. What would be the first thing you'd like to do? Is there something you would like to change as to what's going on now?
Well, as interim director for six weeks, I was very well aware of how things were. I saw, I listened to the people, I work with the seniors and I work for the town. You know, it's a senior center. I've seen things, you know, that I've heard and felt needed improvement or changes. I've been, I've had an open door policy with the other staff. We've had a lot of changes, you know, this year and a lot of stress. So the first thing is, everything that I approach the staff with is, I think of how they're going to feel when we talk about things, you know. I don't overreact or even react, I try to process things, be fair, listen to everybody. I know the space is an issue. It's not easy to outsource. We've managed that. It's not something I think that you can probably say you'd be able to do efficiently until you do it and you deal with such a small building. I also have felt that we need to use the space we have. There was, you know, a lot of accumulating of things over the years and donations. So we've worked hard, the staff and I, to try to declutter and, you know, figure out what we can use, what we, you know, what we have now. Building, you know, the morale at the senior center has been important. Lots of things.
Who was the first incident that you've been involved with in your experience in work with seniors?
The what?
Worst.
Speaking from outreach, which I've done both roles now. It's difficult to kind of say publicly, but exploitation of seniors. I've handled many cases like that. I work closely with the elder affairs officer, we have a great relationship. He knows his role of the law and I know my role to counsel and guide the elder affairs officer. And to gain that trust from the senior to be able to continue to help them as you go through the process, involving protective services is never an easy thing. We are, you know, I am the mandated reporter. Trying to handle that again in the best interest of the town, the best interest of the senior and just always trying to remember what that senior needs and wants and maintain in that respect. It's difficult. It's, it can be a slippery slope and you have to have that personality. You have to bring a lot of experience, it's years, years of doing it.
Gordon.
So could you describe your supervisory experience, including what the job title was and the number of employees that you have supervised?
As interim director?
Well, I guess any experience that you've had.
I do have my resume, I don't, and I wasn't, I didn't submit it with the application because it didn't send color letters, so you guys know. So supervisory for all my jobs?
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
I've always taken leadership. I've worked in assisted living. The River Bay Club was one of the first assisted livings we had on the South Shore and that was back in the early 90s, so now dating myself. I ran, a catering program is what they called it before we really got into levels of care. For assisted living was, you weren't qualified for a nursing home, but you didn't, you know, you needed the help outside. So I've had that role and that was a long time ago. And other jobs with, the two jobs I've acquired and kept for five years, I've been the head aide, nurse assistant. So there's one client and there's several aides that work for that client. I've taken that role on, you know, scheduling and dealing with, with all of that. And then of course, what I've been doing at the council aging.
I'd have to take a copy of your resume if you have it.
Yes.
Par.
We can save it for.
Yeah. Participants in programs can often behave badly. Volunteers can be difficult. And can affect programs and daily operations. What has your experience been in handling delicate situations that occur with non-employees?
Volunteers make a huge part of what we do. I know all of them from our board, right to Kitchen Health. I have seen different situations that become difficult and I've dealt with them. Just recently, I've had a couple in the last few weeks. I usually take the person that I see that maybe would seem the most upset and I just, I try to talk to them privately and again, find out what's going on with everybody. I mean, usually if there's a disagreement or there's a problem, you know, everyone has a say and everyone has feelings, so sort of divide and conquer. Listening is important, validating their feelings, making sure that they understand that we are a safe place, we provide social services. If you just do it in a way that you're not sort of disciplined and like, it's just a way that you tell them, you know, that's how we, that's how we run, that's what we expect. And I also just think, being a leader and showing that myself.
That's good. Thank you.
How do you feel about taking advice from other people other than the board or outside activities?
I think it needs to be more embraced. I think that, I know that the board are there for a good reason, they're given their time. Inviting all of that, embracing all of that, respecting it. It doesn't mean every idea can always be carried out, but it's important that the people that are given their time for the, you know, the well-being and the better of the COA, they should be respected. We should talk, we should get, you know, this.
You ever had to fire anybody before?
No.
Reprimand anyone?
Yes.
What were your feelings on that?
Getting guidance first, making sure that I was following the rules and laws here in our town. Putting it in writing and following the appropriate steps. Personally, was it easy? Of course it wasn't, but just staying calm and professional and trying to understand, you know, again, how that person's feeling and just keeping order is probably the most important thing when you're going through something like that.
How do you do with pressure?
I've done pretty well, I have. It's been tough. We lost a full-time staff member and, you know, seniors come in, they have questions, they've asked about this process. I've explained to them how thorough the town is being, pressured with being short-staffed, pressured with the phone ringing and people coming in. Again, as a social service agency, we have to be prepared for anything. I know I adapt no matter what the situation is, no matter what that person needs when they come in. I just, you know, am able to adapt immediately and figure it out. And I always say, if I can't help them directly, I'll always find somebody that will. So we don't turn anyone away.
Is there anything in your life now within a fear that you're becoming director of the council aging?
Anything in my life that...
May prevent you from fulfilling all the duties of being a council aging?
No, I have an empty mess and I have all this time. I don't know what to do with myself actually, it's weird.
Retire and that fills up all your...
Actually, my cat, she's trying to get up, she's a new york cat, so there you go. Smaller than.
Technology and social media is going to continue to grow and what role are you using it currently for the council and aging? And how would you look to improve the use of social media if you became the director?
Social media is something that I've talked about with the staff and I really feel that the director needs to sort of guide staff with because I think we still have to be really careful when we post things. Again, we're a town, we're a municipality. We need to always, you know, uphold, you know, professionalism, confidentiality. So asking anyone that you may take a picture of is vital. And just being, you know, careful, you want to promote programs and you want to enhance the council aging and what we're doing, but you still, somebody still has to oversee that and guide, make sure that everything's appropriate that's going on on the internet.
Can you give us an example perhaps of a decision you made in your tenure or in the past year that you might have handled differently? This is a tough one.
It is. It's fair. I've learned a lot. I have definitely learned a lot in the last six weeks. I think probably reaching out a little more and going to board, you have this board, our board, embracing all of that a little more, feeling more comfortable to be able to do that. Just still feeling my way and getting to know everybody and probably more of a confidence than being able to do that. So I would say I'd like to see that improved for sure. Follow our relationships.
Do you have any experience where you're involved in anything to accreditation for the council aging?
Any experience with accreditation? What do you need, you have to clarify.
The National Accreditation Society, having sort of government, have you had any experience with that since you've been over there?
Yeah, I have trainings eight to 10 times a year. We get updated on everything from how we, you know, keep files and confidentiality and of course the ethics, different government applications. If that's what you mean, keeping up with in services.
Yep.
I'm actually scheduled for the next two days. We get, it's a two-day convention, so it's kind of good we get it all done. It's difficult to leave the office a lot.
Are you comfortable with the salary that might be paid for this?
I'm more than comfortable and grateful.
Gordon.
What do you think your first 50, 50 days then 100 days would look like if you became the director? What do you think the changes would, you'd see over there?
Gross, but I also know working with seniors and knowing our town, you can't come in abrupt, whether I've been here or not. You need to, you know, slowly try to merge and talk about things and work in programs that are needed. But I wouldn't come in and just quickly try to change everything or a lot of things, I would be sure that I'm hearing the support from the seniors that are there. It's their center.
How would you go about getting volunteers to come overboard with the council aging?
Feeling passionate about the programs, feeling passionate about what we do. I think it says a lot when you're talking to people. I've recruited a lot of volunteers through the years and making sure again that they feel respected and appreciated. It's, it's a big, it's big because again, they're given, they're tied to us.
How would you make the townspeople be aware or even outside townspeople be aware of the type of programs that you're presenting?
Well, we have our newsletter, Word of Mouth. Charlie's great and puts things on the board for us with different events that come up. If you looked at our October newsletter, it's pretty packed. We've got, you know, lots of great things going on, very proud of that. Making awareness, so marketing is difficult in a small town, getting a lot of people get out for, you know, bigger senior center again, without getting the numbers in. A lot of it is through, through networking and Word of Mouth.
So other than that, how would you, I understand the newsletter is sort of targeted.
Yes.
You know, and a lot of information would be referral. How do you get those people who aren't seniors involved in programs and things that are for seniors?
Good question. Talking to the people that do come in and we have generational like volunteers now. We have daughters of seniors that have been involved. That's important. Some of these new fundraises with generations is again, you know, closing that, that gap in having different ages, like you said. Understand what we do, what we do at a senior center is very important if you want to bring things to town meeting and have the acceptance of the need.
Have you had any experience of speaking in public?
No.
You're doing fine.
The reason I ask is that should the subject of a new council aging, well, I shouldn't, you know, I like to get away from the term council aging building, but that's what we call it now, it's a community center, come forward before a town meeting. You as director, should you get the job, should I have to speak to the issue?
I'm, I'm ready because, you know, I was on committees back with Joyce, the former outreach, and Mary Ellen and I'll find my voice like I have tonight. And you know, Troy, you brought up a really good point in August at our board of selectmen meeting, that we don't just serve seniors. And not all senior centers do that. Outreach has to be on board, of course, the director, and I've always been on board with helping people with disabilities as well. So that's what my quarterly reports state. So it is, it's a broad range. And if we're even to open that up even more with a community center as other towns have done, that's, that's only going to enhance things.
My last question, what do you think of the possibility of regionalizing the council aging?
I think it's, I think it's a big step, getting other towns on board. I think a committee would have to be formed. I think you all do so much as it is, we all wear many hats as professionals here in our town. I think it's a possibility, but a lot of things have to come into play. And as you know, with just having started the discussion, making sure we have the support, the real support from the other towns. And I know our town and change would be difficult for our seniors and the possibility of say going to Plinton would be difficult. But if I'm able to continue to do my job as interim or director, getting more grants, you talked about transportation, the things that I'd be able to do, I feel passionate about because it's the chance to have a community center and it's a chance to, we have an intergenerational program that comes over from the school and it's just great to see these kids playing board games with the seniors. They're not on their devices, you know, they're listening to the wisdom, they're respecting our elders and that's what a community center could do for us. I mean, it just, the possibilities around endless as far as I can go.
Tom. How do you see your role as the director or how would you see your role as the director in taking a role, taking that role into the construction of a new center? What do you think you could do or what do you think the director can add?
Support. I'll start with this. I think the tone that needs to be set with our town at this point, we need to forget about all the other ideas. We have exhausted those. I feel sometimes, you know, some, some negative talk about that. I try to put a spin on things that could be happening now. Role as a director would be able to accommodate, to be able to roll with it and do what was needed to be done. We needed to work out of trailers as we thought we would last year when we were going to start building, grants, anything, anything that would, I could do, I'd be on board.
In the meantime, what do you think you could do in overcoming the limitations of the existing facility to attract new seniors or to keep seniors involved and to attract volunteers?
Well, as Charlie knows and Troy, we recently were given a benchmark grant, okay, through the state. Now we have our state formula grant and this is, as far as I can find in files, new for the senior center. One of those opportunities is to make it handicap accessible. That's a big one. I mean, we have to be able to have the right parking, we have the ramp, our doorway. We've decluttered, we have more open space. We actually had a, since I've been there, the first person came in today with a wheelchair freely. They didn't bump into anything. I would do...
Yeah, but she ripped the hinges off the door to get there.
I would do, I mean, like I say, utilizing the space we have. Having the maintenance team on board, which they are, and trying to just accommodate with what we have now. We have several programs, you know, outsourced and that's okay, at least the programs are still in place.
Still in place.
Is it difficult to supervise them? Yes. Do I have certain volunteers that I know that are able to sort of be a liaison? That's how you make it work. Again, just putting aside the negativity and the things that didn't work in the past moving forward.
Gordon, do you have anything for the question?
Oh, I think I hit financials and technology.
You have any questions on the board?
Charlie?
I have a couple, I could follow on what Tom mentioned. I know you spoke a bit about if we went ahead with a project, what role you could play in doing something. I guess I'm asking also even before that point in that we've gone through, we've looked at building a new building, we've looked at renovating a pre-existing building, we've looked at renovating and expanding Pope's Tavern. And each time the townspeople voted against it. I'm going to assume for our conversation at some point, we're going to come back to one of those concepts or a similar concept, you know, we talked a little bit about regional, whatever it is, we're going to have a push, we're going to have to convince the townspeople to say yes to something. And that's saying what it would be, how big it would be, where it would be. Obviously, the board plays a role in that. The building committee plays a role in that. The council on aging, the actual council members do, and so does the director. What is, as director, would you do to encourage the townspeople to say yes to a future, whether it's community center project or council aging project or whatever direction we're going? How do you change people's opinions where they've been saying no and get them to say yes?
By listening to, you know, the board and you're going to have all the facts in place and supporting that because you're not going to bring it and present it to town meeting without all the supporting, you know, support and facts you need. You know, for town meeting, a lot of times it comes down to finance. And when people think there's a possibility of taxes being increased is what we're all trying to combat at town meeting. Our population of seniors will be a big one because our new census will come out in 2020. And showing this distance, statistics, showing the need, showing that over 25% of Halifax are seniors. And one thing we all have in common if we're lucky enough is we're all going to get older. Just show, show the proof, show the need, show them what's, you know, the seniors need. We have to grow into the population also. It's going to be the biggest percentage of the age groups it's predicted in 2020. People are living longer, we want them to age in place, we need to provide them the services.
You mentioned a little bit about the other activities of Pope's Tavern. As we mentioned, people with disabilities. How do you reduce the tension that might occur when you've got different populations who are coming in for different programs using a site facility? So we have, for instance, people who are not seniors but are, have various disabilities. You have people who are coming in for fuel assistance. You have people who are coming in for fuel assistance, for instance. And so, you have different generations, different expectations. There may be a little bit of tension. What are these people doing here? Well, I thought this was this type of place, and I don't know why these people are here. How do you reduce that type of tension so that you make sure that everybody that comes in there is welcome?
And feeling comfortable. It's a good question. It's difficult in a small building with confidentiality. Well, it's giving everybody respect. A lot of times with disabilities, and I have a lot of experience with that before this job, it's, it's a fear of the unknown. They don't understand what might be wrong with someone. So, if I have an opportunity to talk about their disability, then I try to do that. With different, you know, applications I'm doing, I always find a confidential area. Blending, I mean, we're part of the community and a small community that we should all feel welcome in setting that tone. Just introducing people, being friendly, being welcoming, asking somebody that comes in that's different. I mean, just today, two or three different people came in. And it's tough. You have a men's group going on, you have to walk through. Offer them a cup of coffee, give them a tour, bring them to a quiet space. I think instinct is important, and I know I have that. And reading somebody's sort of body language and human behavior and adapting to things quickly. I mean, they walk in, you have seconds to try to figure out what are their needs, what can I do for them, and how do I do it?
In terms of managerial style, I mean, everybody has a different one in working with employees and such. One is when a staff member makes a mistake, to tell that staff member in public that the staff member is erred and what needs to be done, the correct mistake. That ensures there's a gap between when the mistake's made and when the employees notify and make sure that the staff members, the other staff members, the volunteers, the visiting residents, know you're paying attention to what's going on and you won't accept anything else but the best performance from employees. Is this your type of management style? And if so, why do you think it's the best way of managing employees? If not, what is the best management style for dealing with employees who are making mistakes? And why is it better than the one I described?
Well, what I've experienced, I would never focus on something if somebody made a mistake publicly with the other staff members. You may not always be able to address it. There's a difference between confronting and addressing. You might have to wait to the right moment and just try to figure out why it happened, you know, get a general idea of how things sort of played out. Sometimes, and I've found in the past six weeks, when you talk to a staff member and you're sort of talking about the problem, they, you can bring it out in that person to realize it themselves too. And that's always the best way because then they don't get, feel as if they're being confronted or get defensive. Just try to stay respectful, but address it and realize that, you know, I'm the leader and I have to, I have to take charge, but it doesn't mean I have to, you know, make the person feel that I can try to make it a learning experience and all.
In terms of the activities of the council and what your role is, I know for a lot of department heads, it's difficult many times to balance off what you're trying to on a long-term basis and the programs and services you provide to save time from that versus, as you mentioned, people coming in every day and they need help now and you need to deal with it now. And suddenly, you find yourself that you don't have any time to handle the long-term programs and the work that you need to do to, that isn't immediate with that person, but it's more the entire department or how it works with the town. How do you balance that off? How do you make sure that you have time to do those things?
Time management. Staying late if I need to. I've done two roles, two full-time roles myself. There's space upstairs that isn't being utilized. There should be a quiet spot for the director to be able to do their paperwork, all of the bills, everything, formula grants and whatever needs to be done. There are situations where the director may need to oversee. That's fine. You know, the staff can certainly find the director and have them. If they needed to be in that immediate situation, the outreach worker, you know, should also be able to handle it. Town management organizational skills, I mean, I'm in the middle of things a lot. Seniors don't always realize you're on the phone and they're coming in, they're talking. Just be respectful and just say, "One minute," or "I'll be with you soon." If I can evaluate the situation quick enough, I may have to ask them to come back and make an appointment, you know. It's assessing it, right hand and there, Charlie. You have minutes usually to try to figure something out. Because if they came in, it may have been the hardest step they took and they need to help. Seniors, that generation, it's very, very difficult for them to come for help. It's sometimes almost like I'm trying to convince them. They worked hard on their life, supplementing their income with whatever we can give them and help them with funding. They deserve that. And making them feel comfortable and feel, you know, unapproachable and confidential is the first step after that. We usually, I have yet to not finish a case. Everybody that's ever come in.
I may have generated questions from the board now, so.
So, Charlie previously asked if an employee made a mistake, how you would respond. How about if the volunteers or the staff feel that you've made a mistake? How do you think you would respond?
I've had plenty of volunteers that have come in and they're very open and honest. And that's okay, you know, obviously. We talk it through. We talk about different ideas and different approaches. Sometimes it's, you know, the root of something you have to get to. I'm very approachable and I don't think I've had any problem if seniors or volunteers feel there's something that we need to change and we approach it. You know, go into the board if necessary at the next board meeting. You get something that big, absolutely.
Thank you.
Tom, anything?
I, they just, we could go on forever. We've still got about 10 minutes.
So, you 10 minutes, you're forever.
This is pretty basic. What do you feel that the council on aging service priorities are? What is the one single priority, the first thing that you would consider?
Service priorities are being a social service agency, being a safe place, being confidential, respecting seniors. And if they come in for help, we're going to help them.
Fair enough.
Activities and all of that are very important, but that's first and foremost.
So, any questions for the board?
No, I think everything's been covered. Other than the decision, which Charlie already talked about that. Thank you all for your time. I really, this has been, like I say, everything I've done, decades and decades of work with seniors has led me to this job and this moment, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The board will take a few minutes recess before 4:45.
Hi.
I'm Wendy.
Gordon Anders, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Tom Malias.
Nice to meet you.
All right, Gary.
Nice to meet you. I'm Wendy Adams. How's it going? Doing?
Good. Doing good. How you doing?
I'm doing great.
Excellent.
Thank you.
So, the board is interviewing all four candidates tonight. They'll be rotating around, asking different questions. Some of the questions, as Tom mentioned earlier, maybe similar to questions that the screen committee asked, but we didn't take those interviews and the board wasn't there for them. So, you may hear variations of what the board had been asked before. The board may or may not make a decision tonight. It's on the agenda as a possibility, but they're not required to make a decision tonight. They may do it tonight, they may do it at another meeting. So, that's where things stand. We'll try and leave any time at the end if you have any questions for the board also.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
First question, why are you applying for the job and why do you think you should receive the council on aging job?
So, I have actually worked for the Westbridge Water Council on Aging the last five and a half years as the outreach coordinator and shine counselor. But I have a degree from Stern Health College and Healthcare Administration with a certificate in gerontology. And I just feel like now is the time to make a step and maybe become a leader. And that's why I'm applying for the director position.
Have you any knowledge of what goes on in our council on aging at this time? You aware of any jobs that are there?
So, I know that, I know the programs, I've read the newsletter. I know Brother is the interim director right now. And I also know that the building is small, so a lot of the activities have to be held elsewhere. But I'm, I love to do programs. So, I've done a lot of different programs at the council on aging and I think that I could bring a lot of experience to Halifax.
Have you, in that vein, have you familiarized yourself with the building? Have you spent any time in there to?
Not a lot of time.
No, no, but any, yeah, okay. Do you think you can function at a high level in that facility? Is that going to cramp you?
Oh, I don't think so because I think being able to use the space here, I know that they have a kind sheet class that they hold here at the town hall and other buildings that they have in Halifax. And I don't think that's an issue at all. I think the more programs, the better.
What experience do you have with municipal budgeting and grant writing?
So, as of right now, I don't have any with the municipal. I actually worked for Kindred Healthcare in the business office before I have taken this position. I was a business office manager, so I have the budget for the business office. As of right now, I don't have any budget or grant writing, but I do have three people, East Bridgewater, Brockton, and the Hanson Council on Aging Directors that have all taken command of their way and told me that they would help me in those procedures.
Okay.
What would you do to change things or put addition to things at the council on aging if you had the opportunity?
So, I'd love the ability to maybe build on to the building. I know that there was talk at one point about building a new senior center. I think with 10,000 people every day turning 65, I think the need is there. You know, the space that is provided, that's what I'd have to work with. But if we could work as a town to try to build on or, you know, put an addition or a new building would be wonderful, so.
What do you think a director can do to aid in that process? What, how do you perceive a role of a director in trying to get a new facility?
So, I think working with the town administrator and the board of selectmen and also the residents of the town and trying to make everyone aware of the need for a new building or for an addition. Because there are so many things that are going on with seniors right now. And to be able to do those services, I think, is key for the senior population. So, having a building that can incorporate, you know, presentations or large numbers of people for lunch, just to help with social isolation of the seniors would be beneficial.
How would you go about doing that?
Trying to increase the budget.
Try to convince the public.
Oh, to reach the public? Well, I try to go to town meetings and express how important it is that, you know, if we could try to vote to get some more money for the seniors, it would be a wonderful thing. I know that there is grant money available that we could work on, writing grants to get funding. We do a lot of programs at Westbridge Water Council on Aging through the grants. So, I think those would be the ways to get it.
Have you successfully written any grants?
I haven't written any grants yet, no.
I'll steal one of your questions.
Yeah.
How comfortable are you with public speaking? Would you be able to stand up at town meeting and explain what your budget has in it? And if it was for an addition or a new building, would you be comfortable talking to them?
Absolutely, absolutely. Public speaking, I would talk to people about, you know, increasing the need for the community. I think doing fundraisers could be a great thing, an annual drive, an annual campaign. There are ways to get money and I think that we need to work on doing things like that for the seniors.
Really? What type of programs would you add?
Well, I, first of all, I think that any program that can increase education in any, any form for the seniors, whether it's how to promote intergenerational programs with the children in the high school or in the elementary level. I've done a Penn Pell program for the past five years. So, we have 24 seniors who write to 24 fourth graders in the, you know, in the local elementary school. I started pickleball last year. I have a walking club. So, those are things that, you know, we're trying to, no one wants to admit that they're a senior. And in Westbridge Water, it's at the age of 16 that you consider a senior in the town. And so, I call people on their birthdays and I say, you know, "I want to wish you a happy birthday from the council on aging." And people are saying to me, "Oh, I'm not my way to work. I'm too young for that place."
I used to say that.
Yeah, a lot of people say that. "I'm too young to go there." So, but I think really that there's a lot to offer to younger seniors as well as the older population. So, keeping them active, keeping them involved.
Have you ever supervised anyone? If so, have you ever had to release somebody or reprimand anyone?
I have. As, when I was a business office manager at a kindred nursing home, I actually had to, I had to write up someone and we ended up having to fire her just because she had made, she made too many mistakes with the deposits, you know, the incoming money and the deposits, that they were inaccurate. So, we ended up having to keep a record and, you know, write her off several times and then we had to dismiss her.
How do you correct someone if you find somebody, whether it be a volunteer or someone that's an employee of the council on aging? How would you go about reprimanding or talking to them?
Well, first of all, I want to make sure that we're in a private area so that, you know, no one else can hear the conversation. I don't want to embarrass anyone. Everyone makes mistakes. But if it was, you know, something that was ongoing, there would be something that you'd have to document and, you know, counsel them on it every time that something happens, you know, as they make mistakes and try to work with them. I, you know, I wouldn't want to just get rid of someone because they made one mistake.
If you had to describe your management style, how would you do that?
I would say I am a team player. I would want to work together with the other employees at the senior center and, you know, listen to everyone's ideas. I think that's one thing that I'm really good at. I think I listen to people and I hear what they have to say and then work together to make decisions. So, approachable.
Can you use technology to improve the programs and the outreach at the senior center?
So, I think a lot of activities could be actually posted on Facebook and on Twitter. I think the younger population of seniors are now, you know, they have computers, they have Facebook, they're sometimes more tech savvy than I am. You know, sometimes they'll come in and show me something that they're doing on their iPad that I might not have known about. But I think at our senior center, we also have the high school students come over and we have them do a tech day. So, you know, ask questions about a technology.
Can you explain for us a decision you may have made in the past year or so that upon reflection, you might have handled differently? And what you may have done to rectify something? Several parts, but pick one.
So, a decision that I've made in the past, in the past year, I would say, I'm also a shine counselor, so I help people with their health insurance, Medicare needs. And unfortunately, I have in the past taken people from a lot of different towns just because I don't want to say no to anyone. So, I take them in and once they're a client of mine, you know, I want to be able to continue helping them from year to year. That decision has just recently been changed because open enrollment is approaching. And I'm the only shine counselor right now at Westbridge Water. And I can't handle the number of people that are coming to me for open enrollment. So, I now have to say, if I haven't seen you in the past and you're not a Westbridge Water resident, you know, you have to be referred to the regional shine office.
Are you talking about Medicare now?
Yes, yes.
Do you help people as a shine representative with mass health applications?
I do. Mass health and common health. I help people with a SNAP program, fuel assistance.
Because that can be a challenge all by itself.
It can be a challenge. And a lot of times the mass health application, if it's for long-term care placement, I don't do that. I would just do mass health if it's for the community because anything going, anyone going into a nursing home, it really needs an elder log, paternity's, you know.
Yeah, there's people who actually specialize in.
Yes, can track a lot of money for that.
A lot, yes. More than it's worth. It's another story.
And I would never want to do anything to hold up someone from getting mass health and a long-term care placement, you know, so.
Oh, that's good.
It's on you, Gordon.
Yeah, take a long time so I can find any questions. Yeah, take a long time so I can find it in the question.
So you said that you would reach out to some of the other local directors for help with budgeting. Uh, is that something that you decided that you would reach out to them to ask them for help? Because you were going for this position or how did that come about?
So I actually, as a, um, Shine counselor, um, the director in Hanson, um, Mary, she's also a Shine counselor. So I've talked to her a great deal. Nancy Hill in East Bridgewater is also a Shine counselor. And Janice and I sit on the, Janice at Fitzgerald and Brockton. We both sit on the board of directors for Old Colony Elder Services. So I have a lot of interactions with them. And so I feel very confident in talking to them about, you know, my next step. And Janice is actually the one that told me about the position.
Okay.
You ever worked with an individual that was reluctant to accept help with the problems in the scene?
Usually, most of the people that I have met with are looking for help. You know, they come to me and maybe not realizing what type of help they need, but they come to me. And there's a lot of different programs or resources out there that can help people. I have never really come across anyone that's reluctant to help unless it's a situation of hoarding. And I have had that happen where I have been involved in a hoarding situation and that particular person doesn't necessarily want assistance.
How'd you handle it?
So actually, the board of health had condemned the house. And so I had to help her find placement. And I did that through Old Colony Elder Services and the Protective Services. And she is, she has housing. She is now back in West Bridgewater, um, not in the same house, but a different housing. But she's, hoarding is a totally, um, different situation. You know, you can't just go in and clean up someone's belongings without actually giving them the, um, treatment that they need to have. They need to talk to a therapist. They need to talk about why they have this condition and why they're hoarding these issues or hoarding these items.
Why you look at me when you say that?
Are you a hoarder?
He could be.
I've been caught a lot of things, man.
Participants in any program can behave badly. You have a lot of volunteers. They could be from time to time unruly or give out misinformation. How would you handle those situations for non-employees?
I would make sure that I talk to them, um, you know, call them aside. And if they're giving misinformation, I'd want to share the correct information and, you know, tell a volunteer that I appreciate them passing the word around, but I'd want to make sure that they're passing the correct word. So I think it's important to just correct them, but not in a, um, mean or rough way.
Thank you.
What type of management style do you have? Do you have an open door policy or you, you have to make an appointment to see?
No, no, open door. Cause I'm there to serve people. So I have, um, appointments all day long right now as an outreach and Shine counselor. But if someone comes to my office door, I put everything aside and that's what I'm there for is to serve the people that come in. And that happens all the time. And my door is like a, um, turkey, a, a deli line, you know, take a number. And I feel like I'm now serving number 55 and that's what I'm there for. I don't like to close my door.
What would you consider to be your absolute first priority as a director?
Meeting with staff, trying to figure out, um, everyone's role in the Council on Aging. Make sure that everyone's working to their potential and we're working to serve the seniors. In addition to that, I think it's important to also talk to the seniors, the residents of the town and find out, you know, survey what, what they need, what are the needs of the seniors. I know in West Bridgewater, housing and transportation are huge issues. So I think that it would be important as a director to find out what people in Halifax are needing.
Fair enough.
Um, you said that you're a board member of the Old Colony Elder Services. What, um, experience do you think you have on that board would allow you to, um, as director of the Halifax Council on Aging, bring in more programs or bring in, um, other experiences to the seniors in town?
That's a good question. So I've actually been on the board for, um, this is my third year now for the Old Colony Elder Services. It's my, um, second year of being the development chair for a programs committee. So, uh, the development committee. And so we, in the development committee, it's outside of the board and we actually meet before the board members, I mean, before the board meeting. And we work on programs that Old Colony Elder Services need to work on to, you know, raise money. So we do a lot of fundraising issue, um, ideas. But then as a board member, I also sit on the board with a lot of the directors from different senior centers. And being able to, you know, know people at Old Colony Elder Services and what they do and the services that they provide, I think is very helpful in my role as an outreach, but also as the director.
Do you consider the most important trait of a senior citizen director?
The most important trait?
Important trait?
I would say being a good listener, listening to people. They have a lot to offer. You know, seniors have a lot of, um, experience. And being able to sit down and just listen to their experiences that they've had in the past and talk to them about their day-to-day experiences and what they may need. I think that's probably the key trait, being a good listener.
Other than, I, I ask this question. Have you supervised anyone other than yourself on a job?
So when I worked in the business office as a business office manager, I had, um, I had two people under me, actually three people under me. So they were working in accounts payable, accounts receivable, and just the general office staff. And so then also at the Council on Aging, I actually have a, um, outreach assistant. So she works with me. We work together, but I actually supervise everything that needs to be done.
Okay. What would you consider was the most difficult issue you ever had to deal with as a manager?
As a manager, I think the most difficult, and this goes back years, when I was the business office manager at a nursing home, my administrator was, um, buying things, stealing, you know, putting things through on their POs and purchasing items that were never for a nursing home. That was a difficult situation for me because she was my direct boss and I actually had to bring the information to her supervisor.
But you did do it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Good for you. And you said earlier that you had some experience in budgeting, but you didn't have any experience in budgeting, but you were going to get assistance?
Yes. So the budgeting, I have had budgeting, you know, at the nursing home, I ran the office, um, budget. And I have a budget at home that I have to manage as well, but not with a municipal account.
Have you, uh, how, how many state agencies have you dealt with concerning seniors?
Uh, probably about 10. Do you want to know them?
Yes.
Now that you've asked.
So Old Colony Elder Services, I've worked with Department of Transitional Assistance, with Mass Health, with Medicare, the Senior Medicare Patrol. I've worked with Old Colony Planning Council in Brockton. The Shine program that I've worked with, the Fuel Assistance. That's eight. I'm not sure what they had to choose right now.
I'm glad you're keeping count because I lost it. Thank you.
The senior center doesn't just provide services to seniors in Halifax. There's, there's other roles, uh, with people with disabilities, with, uh, home heating oil. Do you do those type of roles in West Bridgewater?
Yes, yes. So we do the Fuel Assistance and SNAP benefits for anyone. So, um, yes, you know, we're helping people that are seniors, but we're helping people that are non-seniors who need assistance financially or also, um, there are non-seniors who are on Medicare. You know, because if you've been disabled for two years, you're allowed to be on Medicare. And so then they come in to see me as a Shine counselor.
You're so set, good. Did you have experience working with national accreditation, so, accreditation for Council on Aging?
No, um, not with the national, but I'm actually, um, we're part of the Mass Council on Aging and I leave tonight after here and I drive up to Danvers and I'm going to the Mass Council on Aging conference for the next three days.
Going to Danvers?
Mm-hmm.
You make it so honest. Wow, Danvers.
My suitcase is packed and I'm ready to go.
Stop me if we've already covered this. I don't think we did. You are aware of the salary range?
I am aware.
Are you comfortable with it? I think you can, okay.
Is there anything that might prevent you from fulfilling the duties of a Council on Aging director?
Anything that would prevent me?
Yeah.
If I was offered the position?
Yep.
And now that I know of, I'm very excited about it.
Sure.
Um, most department heads are always, there's always a bit of tension involved in their work in that, especially something with the Council on Aging, where it's very much, um, driven by residents and others who come in. They're looking for assistance. They're going to be there participating in programs. Many times they need assistance now or they're saying they need assistance now. At the same time, as a department head, you're trying to look at the long-term picture of your department. Whether, you know, new programs, new services or continuing ones. The overall budget preparation as an example. Um, you're dealing with a facility that's not in the best of shape. You deal with those type of issues, how to make all that work. With a lot of volunteers and with the, uh, Council on Aging and monthly meetings of the council, how do you balance off the short term with the residents coming in? Need services right then and there with the long term? And so that you make sure that you can handle both areas of your work.
Well, so I want to be, make sure that the residents that are coming in are served the, the way that they need to be served. And whether it's myself or someone at the Council on Aging that might be able to help as well. To be, you know, if I was able to delegate it to someone else to help that resident, so that I could meet all the department head meetings or the roles that I'd need to do.
Gordon touched on this a little bit about that, obviously, the Council on Aging provides services to non-seniors.
Yes.
But how do you deal with the tension there where you have families coming in? Or you have people with disabilities coming in and you have the seniors there and people start looking away about it? I didn't think that these people were going to be here. Well, I'm comfortable with, you know, all these kids running around because, you know, the parents need to bring the kids or something like that. How do you make sure that everybody feels welcome there? No matter what service or what program they're going to be participating in?
Well, I think, first of all, I think my whole management style is approachable and welcoming. So I think that I would, as an overall director, I think I would welcome anyone to come into the facility. I think timing wise, it's also important to think about, you know, if the seniors are there for a program, then you might not want to have an appointment set up with a family member. But if they happen to just walk in off the street, which happens a lot, you know, if you can find a quiet area for that family so that they're not, you know, upsetting the other seniors that are there. I, I really think that the seniors love seeing children and I think it's a good interaction, but.
Um, actually, as you mentioned, you've been in the building before for meetings. It's, it was built around 1840, give or take. Never quite sure. They didn't put, they didn't pull a building permit back then, so we don't have a specific record. And the board has talked about the need, and you've talked about the need for some sort of new facility. We've looked at new buildings, pre-existing buildings, renovating there. However, we know whatever we're going to be doing, and I'm hoping we'll do something in the near future, the current Council on Aging Pope's Tower is where the service is going to be provided. Um, it's cramped, um, there are a lot of building and system problems. The second floor isn't accessible to the handicapped. And it can be stressful therefore. I mean, just the cramped spaces. Creates stress, creates tension. The morale isn't helped by all that. What would you do with the current building to try and improve that situation while we try and figure out a solution longer term for some sort of other Council on Aging facility?
So if there was a, a means to it, if we could, you know, on the first floor, perhaps move some of the, um, the, um, larger objects, you know, so maybe move them upstairs so that we actually make more room so that the seniors feel comfortable. I think that's important. I think that it's key that all buildings are handicapped accessible. I think that's a big issue with, you know, with the.
Right, but I mean, yeah, I know, I think everybody here in the audience and the board, everybody would agree with that. Just the challenge for the second floor is even trying to put in a stair lift can be difficult given the size of, you know, width of the, the building, but also the width of the stairwell as an example. I mean, we keep looking at various solutions.
The most private place in that old building right now is the bathroom and somebody's always knocking at the door.
Oh, really?
I'm being honest.
Do I have to make an appointment for the bathroom?
Yeah, you do. Possibly, you never know.
I'll try not to drink too much coffee.
No, but I was, I was serious, not to cut Joey off. You know, space is why we're looking to build a new building is because we don't have adequate space to do the type of things that we need to do within the building. And hopefully whoever comes in as the director will be able to motivate staff and employees as well as other people who are not senior citizens, that it's a good thing to do. So public speaking is one of the key, at least in my mind, because it's going to be a lot of convention that needs to be done.
Okay, okay. May I ask a question? Are the four of you on board for that, you know, for a new building?
I think, I think the board is, I think the board, I'll speak for the board here and the board can correct me. I think the board understands there's a need to do something. We've looked at building a new building. We've looked at taking a pre-existing building, renovating that. We've looked at renovating, expanding Pope's Tower. Each, in each case, the townspeople, um, said no to moving forward. And I think the board, whether Gordon was on the finance committee for much of that time.
Yep.
Tom's been the building inspector and then on the board second. Troy's been on the board second since before I was here.
Since before anybody gets here.
So I, so the board's very familiar with all those possibilities. And I think that, you know, we're even looking at doing something even as possible on a regional basis of some sort. Um, so I think the board is open to all the ideas that are possible and recognizes that what we have right now is inadequate. The question is, is now, wow, those options, and we're still just beginning to look at all of them. Which ones might be the best? How do we get to a point that we can bring something to the townspeople? And then the big hurdle is how do we get enough people to say yes to whatever option we bring? But I don't think anybody's shut the door on anything at this point. The board can speak better to that.
It's really trying to come up with a project that can be supported by the populace and can be afforded by the populace. And we're a small community. We do not have a large commercial base. It makes it very difficult. Everything falls on the individual taxpayer's burden. I mean, it becomes their burden. And, uh, and we've had some other projects that have taken place. Of course, there's numerous needs in various departments. Uh, we've spent a lot of money on the school in the last few years because it was literally neglected for 20 years. That's coming on board now. So, you know, we have to find a project that's doable and supportable. That's not a word, but I mean it.
Well, so with the new school coming, is it a possibility?
Well, it's not a new school. It was a renovation.
A renovation?
Yeah, we, the last piece of this, um, the last expansion of the school was back in 93, 94. And since, it had been about 25 years. So the last three summers, we've done a new roof, new window siding and doors and completed a fire suppression system for the last three summers. So the building you see there across the street in that direction, which also, uh, the library is attached to it, is the school and that, it doesn't, that hasn't changed. We've just changed sort of the envelope of it.
Okay.
And the various systems that are in the building. We're not expecting, no one's expecting to have them move out anytime soon because we just factored that. I mean, our hope is that all those systems will be good for another 20, 25 years at least.
Yeah, but my point was we took on the financial burden of those changes, so that's.
And to answer the question, I've been on board now for 30 years and 22 little years I've been trying to get Council on Aging some type of facility. And I've always been very supportive of it because I'm one of those old people.
We're all getting that.
I know we all spoke in favor at the last meeting. It was just, it was a lot. The numbers kept changing. It was very frustrating and, uh, there just wasn't the support for it. It was, it was pretty outspoken.
So knowing that, are you still interested in, uh?
I am.
How are we doing so far?
That was actually one of my questions is like, would you see the COA in five years? That was actually one of my questions, is like, would you see the COA in five years?
Hopefully a solution. Oh, yeah.
Now, no.
But like I said, we're just starting out again, we just, we had a meeting with the Council on Aging and other departments and such, just, I think back in August, we had another meeting with public safety personnel and building committee folks also to talk about the options. I think one of the things we're going to look at is, you know, for the regional is, if we're going in that direction, it's going to be a step-by-step type of thing. One of the things we want to do is, whoever we do hire, we want that person to meet with their counterparts over in Plinton and Carver, because at this, just as a beginning point to say, okay, much, as much as people, we know that many Halifax residents will go to Meadowport, or they'll go over to the Bridgewater, or they'll go up to Duxbury, for instance, or Kingston for various programs and services. Let's see if we can do some more interaction with Plinton and Carver, and see if people want to travel to those towns, and those towns that Halifax for various programs. Encourage that, because obviously, if we're going regional, there's going to be travel involved. So let's start off by seeing how much people are willing to make that step, but at the same time, to continue looking at building options here in Halifax, too.
So, excuse me, Charlie, would that actually entail working with the town administrator from Plinton and Carver?
No, your counterparts.
So, just the directors?
At least at the start, the directors would, could meet together and say, hey, let's see what we can do together. We're, you know, still three separate councils on aging, but if we're, maybe we don't duplicate services, for instance, if we're running a tight sheet program here in Halifax, do we need to run a tight sheet program in Plinton and Carver? If we're running this program in Plinton, we might then need to run this program in Halifax instead, or encourage Halifax residents to go to that program in Plinton, as an example.
Okay. So on that note, would you provide transportation, or does the COA provide transportation outside of Halifax?
Yes.
Okay.
We do it for medical appointments, they will go on shopping trips, there's the walking club that uses the, the council, they'll go to various points for their walks and such.
Okay.
It honestly, Gordon, one of the limitations is we only have two vans.
Right.
So, and there are priorities with vans, and maybe that, again, implement regional, we need to work with the state federal agencies to get another van, for instance, and more drivers, and, you know, everything will cost money, but it may be a way of providing a higher level and more services than we are right now.
Okay, okay.
Can you, can you give me an idea of how, what your experience has been with non-senior individuals that have come through the door?
So I've, I've actually worked with many non-seniors, one as a shine counselor, so people that are disabled and have Medicare, so they come to me for assistance with their Medicare plans, but also a couple of people who have had foreclosures on their house, and trying to help them, I've had people that have come to me with financial needs, and we have an emergency fund at West Bridgewater, so I also sit on that board. So I have the resources to be able to help people, guide them into, you know, the services that might help them. With the younger non-seniors, they can go to the Department of Transportation Assistance, and they can receive, you know, SNAP benefits and cash advances, so I have had non-senior experience as well.
Hey, Gordon? Tom? What, what program do you use to track right now your appointments?
So, for my appointments, I use Google Calendar, you know, to set up appointments. So everyone in the office can actually see the appointments that I have, and my assistant actually does all of my booking of my appointments on Google Calendar.
Okay.
But to log and to track, we use Coats, which is the COA tracking system.
Okay.
Okay, you have any questions for the board?
Well, so I wanted to know about the five-year, oh, I know, the expectations of the director, I think we've covered that. And I know when I met with the, the initial interview committee, Jean from the library, the librarian, and head tech.
Just in case you didn't know she was there.
She had mentioned, you know, creating a memory cafe, and working with the director of the Council on Aging, and, you know, hosting a memory cafe for people with dementia. I'm all on board on that. I didn't know how Halifax felt about becoming a dementia-friendly community.
I don't really know either.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I think it's very important.
Mark can't remember where she said.
You know, a dementia-friendly community would be everyone in the whole town, and so it would be working with restaurants, and the police and fire department, and, you know, getting everyone on board to how to work with people that have dementia. And it's increasing every day, and I think it's really, really important. West Bridgewater is not a dementia-friendly restaurant, but, I mean, a dementia-friendly community, but we have a lot of programs for people with dementia, or caregivers, but, you know, I think the town of Halifax, I think it's the wave of the future, you know, with the restaurants, and having special menus for people with dementia, and the Alzheimer's Association, working closely with them, that would be another organization that I've worked with. And they have little cards that you can just hand to a, you know, someone at the grocery store, the store clerk, or, you know, the hostess at a restaurant, and it just says, the person I'm with has dementia. And so they can just understand that it might be difficult, if, you know, they might need to just get up and leave, or, you know, I think it's important that people are aware about dementia.
I can't possibly see a downside to doing that.
No, no.
I mean, that sounds like a great idea.
And I know Halifax has a triad, so I know that they work closely, you know, the Council on Aging, and the police and fire. And I think, you know, I had mentioned at the last interview about the dementia friendly and the police and the fire, and how you approach someone with dementia is very, very important, and so for an EMT to come up behind someone is startling, you know, everyone needs to know how to work with people with dementia. So that was my idea about the dementia friendly. That's not my idea originally, but to make Halifax a dementia-friendly, I think is important.
Good, okay, very good. Any further questions, Lynn? I think we've covered a lot of stuff.
Okay.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you, I'm going to drive to Danvers now.
Oh, Danvers!
Better than doing it tomorrow morning.
Absolutely, with the traffic and everything.
Oh my God, what's in Danvers?
Big hotels.
Hotels, yeah.
Never been there.
May I just leave these, I kept these for the, after interview, and I just wanted to leave these here for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So if the board will take another reassess?
Yep.
If you must.
Gordon Andrews, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
It's called the hot seat.
Hot seats, well, I just almost hit a deer, so, upsetting.
Yeah, that could, that could do it.
Wasn't Bambi, was it?
It looked out at me, and I looked at it, and I just stopped and said, okay, you go.
Yeah, good choice.
Yes.
So just to reiterate, the folks in the back have already heard this spiel before, but you haven't heard, because I ought to repeat it, the same for everybody here. So the board selection is going to be interviewing all four candidates tonight, this is their intention, and they may or may not make a decision tonight, it's up to them, it's on the agenda, so if they wish to make a decision tonight, they could, but they don't have to, they could wait till a future meeting.
Okay.
What will happen is the board's going to rotate through the questions, they'll go around a number of times, because we've got 45 minutes. At the end, we'll leave a little time if you have any questions for the board also, so they can do that, so.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And first question is, why do you think that you should be the person to pick for the Council on Aging Director's position here in Halifax?
Well, I, I think I'm one of the best Council on Aging Directors in the whole state. I'm very dedicated to working with seniors and to the mission of the Council on Aging, which is meaningful, and working with elders and seniors, we're two different, we're talking about people from 60 to over 100, or almost three generations, that's been my life's work, so it's really, I studied it, I've lived and breathed elder services my, my whole career.
Christine, just, so you know, we're being taped, so you might want to...
Reject.
Is your, provide a little more, about your Council on Aging experience, what you're doing right now?
Oh, I know.
What you've done in the past as a director?
What I've done in the past, okay. I worked for the Stoughton Council on Aging for seven years, and was, during the recession, two departments merged, and the Council on Aging merged with the Youth Commission, and the Youth Commission Director was supervising social workers. I'm a licensed mental health counselor, not a social worker, so I wasn't able to continue the supervision, so I was laid off. And I then started a geriatric care management business. I had been doing that kind of informally, geriatric care management is, some people call it rent-a-jitter, it's helping families as their loved ones age. And I did that informally for a number of years, and then when I was laid off, I started a small local business doing that, and also purchased a home care agency. And from there, I was hired to work for the town of Norfolk, and I worked for Norfolk for two years, and my elderly mother was sick, and I had to move into closer to home, so I took her job very close to my mother's assisted living facility, and helped her until she became stable, and worked at, I'm sorry, the assisted living, continuing care retirement community, with, in the nursing home, I was going for about six months, and wasn't happy with what I was doing. I have a degree in art therapy, and was hoping to do work with individual dementia patients, and found myself to work with groups of patients, and it just, it wasn't exactly what I was hoping it would be. So I left that job to take another job, and then I got mauled up, and I was sick for three months, so, yeah. So I'm just starting to look for a job again, but most of my time has been working with seniors, and I could go back further than that, I started off working in a nursing home when I first got out of graduate school, and when I saw what I saw in nursing homes, I thought, we need a revolution, and I want to be part of this revolution, and I have been for 20 years. I've lobbied at the State House, and I'm, I'm very proud to say that I was part of helping to make Medicaid dollars more available for services outside of nursing homes in community services than in nursing homes. And in the last 20 years, the proportion has flipped from a third in the communities to thirds in the nursing homes, and it's completely flipped now, there are many, many more programs in, in the community to keep people aging in place.
In that, lived the experience of you ever had to supervise other individuals, and how many, and what was your management style?
I've had to supervise up to 20 full and part-time employees, and most of the part-time employees were bus drivers. So we would meet, I had a person who was in charge of the bus, the transportation program, and I would meet with her and the outreach director and the assistant program director weekly or daily, and we would meet with the bus drivers on a monthly basis. And my, I would say my style is, I'm not an authoritarian personality, I believe in having people help, getting people to buy into what I believe, so that we're all on the same page, we're here for the seniors, we're here to do the very best we can for the elders in the community, be they the young elders who are coming for yoga classes, or the homebound elders who only see one person a day when someone from Meals on Wheels delivers a meal to them.
When you said bus, did you mean a transportation van for the seniors?
Right, right, right. We did about 100 rides a day when I was in Stone, it was a very big transportation program.
Hey, Gordon? So are you familiar with municipal budgeting, and how that works, and how about grants? How familiar are you, and successful are you with writing grants?
Well, I always do the automatic formula grant from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs. I've done some small grants, I did a grant for, with Old Colony Planning Council, I've done the cultural council grants, and if I've seen other grants that have come along the way through the Mass Council on Aging, I've applied for some of those grants.
How successful have you been with the grants?
I, quite a great grant that I applied for. There were small grants that were just, you know, pilot projects that were offered, and I tried, and I was lucky enough to get them.
I remember what Gordon mentioned about budget work, what are the challenges that you've encountered in working on municipal budgets, and having to submit a budget and then follow up once the money's been allocated?
Well, when I was in Norfolk, it was not a problem, because that was, it was a set budget, and there was really no negotiation. When I was in Stoughton, I had a very active board of directors, and every year, we would go before the town meeting and advocate for a greater piece of the pie. We would make our charts and show the little teeny piece of the Council on Aging, and then the size of the population in relation, of seniors in relationship to the rest of the town, and try to make an argument that way. And I was successful to some degree, or we were, I was able to create a growth position, and we really started a lot of growth, which we would notice as the population is growing.
So was that with the support of the, did you have a finance committee within town? And is that with their support, or did you go to town meeting and you overturned their recommendation?
It was with, it was with my board of directors.
Okay.
What would you say would be your first priority as a new director?
Getting a drink of water, I'm sorry.
There's a water fountain out there.
No, I'm kidding. My first priority, I really would want to get to know the seniors, I'd want to get to know, I know that there is always an active group of seniors that are at the senior center on a regular basis, I'd like to get to know that core group, but then I would also like to really do a lot of outreach work, and I've worked, I've worked with the visiting nurses for a number of years, early during my career, and have a real soft spot in my heart for homebound elders, so developing volunteer programs to do more outreach for elders, you know, homebound elders would be a priority for me.
Have you, have you had an opportunity to familiarize yourself with the existing facility, and do you think you could work at a high level in that atmosphere?
I only start from the outside, and I think that I could work with anything. Emmett Schmarzo from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs said that Council on Aging Directors can do more with a dollar than most people can do with a hundred dollars, or a million dollars, I think that's kind of a common statement, but it's true, you know, we tend to be very creative people and find a way to do what needs to get done.
So I understand that you've spoken before to town meetings before?
I have.
How successful were you getting a bigger piece of the pie?
Well, in the seven-and-a-half-year period, we were able to create a position, so I thought that was a pretty successful, I thought that was a pretty good success, given the fact that the Council on Aging is not the fire, police, DPW, you know, lower down.
The school.
I'm sorry?
Oh, the school.
The big four, right, like the schools, so, it takes some convincing, and I think that social services people think are, oh, well, you've got volunteers, and there are a lot of nice people out there, but there's a lot of important work to be done. When I was in Stoughton, it was very interesting, I did a lot of work with the police, and the courts, and the fire, and a lot of different departments, and it was, it was very interesting. I think every town is different. I've seen that, going to Mass Council on Aging meetings, that, you know, there's really a big difference in different towns, and Norfolk and Stoughton, the two towns that I'm familiar with, couldn't have been more different. Norfolk is a very quiet, small town, Stoughton is a big town, a lot going on, I had a police officer that used to come to my office about every six weeks and say, they're going to find or in a, in a shallow grave, you got to come and help me. So I did a lot of work with the police and the fire, and, and a lot of the different departments. We met every other week with the, as all the department heads did with the town administrators, so we're enabled to get to know each other pretty well.
In your years of experience, have you ever had an opportunity to work in a construction program for a new facility or anything? Just curious, because we, we've been attempting for many, many years.
I've read that, I've read that.
Just curious if you've had any background.
I haven't, I've, I've been lucky that way, but I know that it's important, and it's a struggle, and it's something you just have to keep going after, year after year.
That's understood, yeah.
Right, but I, I understand you're pretty creative, the towns are pretty, pretty creative, and you have any different programs in different facilities. The towns are pretty creative and we have any different programs in different facilities around the town. So that's.
Desperate times, different businesses.
Yeah, that's right. It's hard.
What's your use of social media and technology to improve outreach for the community?
Well, I am familiar with Facebook. I developed a Facebook page when I was in Norfolk. I write a newsletter, wrote a newsletter every single month. I actually had a television program. I don't know if you'd call that social media. That was back in the early 200s. I'm sorry. I had a weekly, or it wasn't weekly, maybe it was every other week program that was on cable TV. And I didn't think much of it, but we, I had some pretty important people come on, you know, people from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs and some of the state senators and different people talking about issues pertaining to elders. And it went on for the entire time that I was there. It was a lot of fun. I would see people and they would say to me, "I saw you on TV." And I thought, oh, I didn't think anyone watched.
Well, this is being taken too.
This is TV. So, yeah, some people do, you know, I think, I was listening to the radio today talking about some of the town politics, and not the town politics, politics, which I of course we can get into. But the statements that decisions are made by those who show up struck me. I think it's very important to pay attention to that.
That's very accurate, too.
It sure is, it sure is.
So having worked in Norfolk and Stoughton, their populations are probably three times as big as Halifax. What type of budget did you have?
In Stoughton, I had 500,000 plus the formula grant. And you didn't have friends before. Before I came to Stoughton, the friends committee had disbanded. And Norfolk, and Stoughton had, boy, there were, I think there were 5,600 seniors in the town. So there were quite a few, and that was quite a while ago. Norfolk, my budget was about 150,000 or 200,000. But most of the bills, oh, aren't you nice, thank you so much. Most of the bills, electricity, gasoline, most of the bills were paid for in bulk by the town. So I didn't have to be concerned about individual bills. It was just salaries and programs that we put on.
That makes it easier?
Made it very easy, yeah. Thank you.
Do you ever have to reprimand someone or release somebody from a position?
I didn't have to release somebody from a position. But when I went, when I worked at one of the senior centers, the previous director had been there for 30 years. And there was, there were two staff working there. And one of the staff members, no one signed in or signed out. And the secretary that I worked with was right next to me, so I saw her all the time. The driver, I didn't see him all the time. And I said to him, "No, can you just, I'm gonna have people sign in so I can keep a record and I know when people are working, when people are not working." And he became very upset by that and went to the union and briefed it.
You were harassing him, huh?
Well, I wasn't gonna sign something that wasn't legal. You know, I said, "If I don't see that you're working, I can't sign that. It's a, it's taxpayers' dollars and it's dishonest and I won't do it." So I didn't let him go, but we weren't, we were on polite terms after that. But it angered some of the seniors in town because they loved him. He had been there forever and it didn't bother them that he didn't, he didn't work 20 hours a week. But he was paid 20 hours a week and he was in a union and he had full benefits. And I just had to do the right thing. What I thought was the right thing.
Didn't there have done that?
Sort of along in that vein, acknowledging that from time to time, participants in programs can behave that badly. Volunteers can be difficult. How do you deal with a situation with non-employees?
I would say in general, I would pull the person aside and talk to them individually and see if we could work something out. And usually that's, that's been successful.
Fair.
We have a thousand questions to ask.
In trying to pick things that we haven't already covered.
I'm sorry. How would you deal with a situation where you had a person that had dementia, Alzheimer's, and their young, their children came to you and said, "We need help." How do you go about dealing with the person that's got dementia?
I would say that's one of my greatest strengths. I, as a geriatric care manager, work with adult children of elders. I am an adult children of an elder. I have a 91-year-old mother right that I'm overseeing her care right now. She's in an assisted living and doing very well, so that's great. But it's something that, it's one of my most, I think it's one of the most enjoyable parts of the job. I think creating programs, that the creative part of that is very exciting. But as a counselor, and which comes naturally to me, I've always had a good relationship with the adult children of elders. And I've made that known in newsletters and in the reputation of the town. You know, if you know somebody that needs some help, let them know that we're here. So I think that's a really important role that a Council on Aging Director plays.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Going back to the building itself, I understand that you haven't been inside it, so you don't know its ins and outs. But it's built around 1840, give or take. It's fairly cramped. It wasn't built, obviously, as a Council on Aging facility.
Right.
There are privacy issues in terms of the layout. The second floor really isn't accessible to the handicapped at all. But all those factors compress, plays a lot of stress, a lot of tension for the people who are there, whether they're staff, the volunteers, the residents coming in. I understand, given that you're unfamiliar, but what do you think you might at least look at as doing to try and, given that we're gonna use that facility for some period of time in the future, no matter what we end up directionally going? What would you do to try and reduce, change the physical nature of the building, change what's in there to try and reduce that level of stress to improve morale?
I can't change the building. I don't know, is the top story used for offices and the lower part used for activities and programs?
More the first floor is a mix of both of those things. There's been limited usage of the second floor. They had, for instance, an art class that was up there because some of the participants couldn't get up there. They've moved it to, they're looking at other locations. One of the things that we've had previous Council on Aging Directors look at is in fact expanding the number of venues where services could provide for some of those exact reasons.
Right. Well, I mean, that's what I would do, is expand as much as possible with the schools and different community agencies in the town. I imagine I would use the upstairs for confidential meetings, for supervision, for, as you were talking about, meeting with adult children. I saw our TED Talk once. I don't know if you're familiar with TED Talks, but it was about going on a walk, taking a walk. And I think that's a great thing to do. I think that if I was, I don't know what the staff, existing staff is right now, but I think that that would be a great way. If the person likes to walk and it's not too hot or too cold, is to go out for a walk and to talk and get away and kind of get a break and give everyone a little bit more space.
A lot of Council on Aging's these days provide services to people who aren't seniors, who aren't elderly. They may be families who need fuel assistance. They may be people with disabilities who need a van or for other services. However, there's always a certain amount of tension possibly between those different groups in the sense of, you know, whether it's, you know, they feel it's their place and these other people are coming in here and invading their space or something like that. Yet you need to provide all those services. How do you make, reduce that tension? How do you make everybody feel welcome and that people don't confront each other because of their differences?
It does a very hard thing to do. I think that you have to be a role model. And it's, it's a fact that we provide that service, that people need fuel assistance. It's confidential, private. That would take place in a private place, either myself or the outreach worker, whoever's doing that service. And I would, it would just have to be, I would just be a role model. It's not something that you discuss. It just, it is what it is.
I had one around it to use and I misplaced it.
Space is a big problem. That's tough, that's a tough issue.
Duties of the Council on Aging Director. This is similar for a lot of departments. It doesn't matter which part, police, fire, it doesn't matter. You've got, you know, long-term goals and objectives of providing those programs and services and sort of an outlook or philosophy that should be a part of everything you're doing. At the same time, you've got residents and others coming in who need services right then and now.
Right.
How do you balance off the time spent between making sure those long-term goals and objectives are met, but at the same time, for the residents who aren't probably worried about those things because they need help now, coming in and helping them? How do you get both of those things done?
I think with the long-term goals, you just have to keep the conversation going all the time. And I think it's important to talk, you know, with all of you, with the town meeting members. You have open town meeting, I believe, right? With the board of directors. I think it's something that you just have to keep alive. You can't just let it drop. You have to keep it alive. And then I think the other part of the question was short-term goals?
Well, in the sense of how do you get both of those done? Because you have a limited amount of time.
So short-term goals are, I think those are something that you're working on on an every single day basis. You're gonna introduce a new program. So you bring in a new instructor and you advertise it and put it on Facebook and in the newsletter. Whereas long-term goals are things that you're, issues you're discussing with the town fathers, basically. It's not something that is being discussed as much with the participants at the Council on Aging or not. Sometimes friends at the Council on Aging are very interested. Sometimes current participants of the Council on Aging are interested. Sometimes they're not. Because if it's, we're talking about building a senior center in 15 years, they might not be around to do it in 15 years.
Well, we're hoping to do it sooner than now.
I don't want you worried for the two. I know it sounds like you've been creative and looking at some different options.
And try to continue to be. It's a challenge. Can you think of a decision you may have made over the course of your career that you, upon reflection, might have handled differently? And some rationale behind it?
In one of my jobs, I was asked to make some drastic changes. And there was a very good rationale behind that, making those changes. It had to do with the changing demographics of the population. Bringing in more baby boomers was basically the kind of the global goal. And I went gahno doing that and brought in a lot of new programs and did a lot of new things, while at the same time remaining respectful of the people who have been coming to the senior center for a long time. But there's, as I said, there's a, and I think there's a sense here, there's a group of people that come to the senior center on a regular basis and they're used to doing things a certain way. So you have to be very careful. I felt that I had been careful, but just having, I had a program downstairs that wasn't being used for anything else. And that was a delicate matter. And I think I would have gone a little bit slower. So I can be ambitious. I know a lot of things that I would like to see done. There's fun things. And I think there are important things like keeping people warm with fuel assistance and food stamps and those sorts of things. But there's also a lot of fun to be had too, as we get older. So I would say that I would just be a little bit more cautious and listen a little bit more.
Good, fair enough. Do I need more questions?
I think you have, you have experience with municipal budgets. You sound like you have experience with social media, done newsletters, worked with other Council on Aging. So I think, I think I'm kind of good with the questions.
How do you deal with pressure?
With pressure, I walk. I'm like forced to go. I, which is why I brought up walking. I love to walk.
And you got a box of chocolate, too?
No chocolate. Just water. But walking, being in nature, that's what I do when I'm under pressure.
What do you do outside of work? Do you have any hobbies, anything with that nature?
I'm a hiker. I'm a biker. I'm trying to be a photographer. Trying to learn how to do watercolors. I read a lot. I do a lot of research.
You gonna have enough time to do the gym?
Sure I do, sure I do. I don't sleep.
What frustrates you?
What frustrates me? I try not to get frustrated. And that's part of this mindfulness, you know, this kind of meditative state that we're all trying to bring ourselves into. Because, and I think that's very important. But I get frustrated because I would like to see more done and it doesn't happen fast enough. And that's part of my personality, I think.
If you had to sum up your management style in a few words, what would that be?
It would be, we're all in the same boat and we're all going in the same direction. And really educating or helping to, helping people to understand or to reinforce understanding that our mission is to make the vet the later years in life. Now, I'm over 60, so I can put myself in that category the best I possibly can be, to be as physically healthy, as intellectually stimulated, as creatively, creatively stimulated. I don't know, but that's a real word.
That was good.
To be learning all the time. I think, my son said to me once, a long time ago, when he was a little boy, we were talking about life and happiness and he looked at me and he said, "Well, if you're not happy, what's the point?" And he's right. I think that that's the goal. You know, we have serious issues to take care of, serious matters. Not enough room, it's never enough room, never enough time. But I think, I think I'm losing track of what I, the question. But having fun is, I think is important. So just try to fit everything all in is difficult.
What do you think your first 50 days would look like at the Council on Aging?
Okay, so 50.
Or, you know, a couple of 45.
Maybe do math, or we'll do math.
Two months, two months.
First, I would say my first, I would be doing several things at once. The most important thing to me would be to get to know the community, to know the active participants and to start to learn about the, what I call invisible elders, the people who are living in their homes and they're isolated and they don't see anybody. When I was in Stoughton, I set up a program, actually, I was with the visiting nurses. I was associated with visiting nurses. And I set up a program where seniors were calling homebound elders. And that was a volunteer program. So there are a lot of little things that can be done that can make a difference. I'm getting sidetracked again. The question was what?
But what would you do the first?
Oh, so I would get to know the participants that came on a regular basis. And then maybe talking to the fire department, the police department, the selectman, the town administrator, other people in the town. I don't know if you have a visiting nurse association, but there are VNA's in the area. Getting, and I've worked with VNA's a lot, getting to know the people that need help. And then organizing volunteers to come and share their talents and their time in helping. and their time in helping the people that need help. I think that volunteers are really, there's a big problem with this aging population. It's kind of like global warming. It's very serious. Isolation is more, is worse for a person's health than smoking a pack of cigarettes a day. And there's a phenomenon called death by despair. And there are a lot of people who are just dying out of loneliness or committing suicide. The suicide rate among the elders is going through the roof. So there would be a lot to learn. You know, there would be a lot to, I have a lot of ideas already. I have a lot of things that are priorities to me as a professional in the field. So those are the, those would always be kind of the core of what I would be doing. But I would also be responding to the individual town because every single town is different.
Very good. Okay.
Any questions for the board?
How involved are you with the council on aging?
Every day.
Every day?
Choice artistic need.
Oh, you're.
A roving ambassador, let me put it that way.
I'm one of those senior citizens that go over to the council aging at least two or three times a week.
Oh, great. Good. Well, I think the more active people are in the council on aging, it's a community. It's a, it's, and it takes a village. It really does. You know, this is a small town and if you're gonna take care of each other, we need everyone to participate. And intergenerational programs are very important. They're also a way to bring young people into the field. Most young people don't think working with old people is very exciting. But when we have intergenerational programs, we can show them that that's not true, that older people have a lot to offer. And older people can learn that younger people have a lot to offer too. And there's a lot of different ways to bring those two groups together.
Oh, I have my eight-year-old teacher, I'll use the phone here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And hopefully you will have a decision, so.
Okay. And hopefully I won't run into anything on my way home.
Yeah, this area is pretty well populated with deer.
We don't have any water in there though. So if you see a pig running around on somebody's house.
And well, I live in Easton and the other day I looked out my window and I saw three deer galloping down my street. So we're a little more populated than Halifax, but I like this.
Is that off of 106?
That I saw the deer?
Yeah.
Yes. I know exactly where it was.
They're a little pond of water not too far away here.
Well, the deer literally stopped and looked me in the eyes.
Deer in the headlights, huh?
Yeah, and I just, I said, "After you." Well, thank you. It was very nice to meet you all.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in. And he got his cup back. It's a wonderful thing.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I think I missed some of the other.
Let's take another small break.
Yeah.
We're sorry that the other candidate wasn't able to make it here, but we're gonna set another date so she can be interviewed because I think it's only fair to do that.
And what we will do is definitely publicize, you know, the fact there'll be another public meeting. Everybody's gonna be invited. I don't know what date and time. I'll need to start to refer, find out her schedule and then work on, get the board's schedule.
We're gonna try to get it done sometime within the next week. Okay? Because, well, I'm not gonna take anything more than that.
But it won't be any earlier than Friday because it'll be an official meeting. We have to post $48 advance and everything, so.
Well, thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I hope, I hope we were, the soft shoe was good enough for the entertainment.
So if the board would take motion to adjourn?
I move your chair.
Second? All in favor?